All meetings in order, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings held January 28th and February 6th?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, that motion carries. No one wishing to address the board, may I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, that motion carries. Good news report, Deanne.
Good evening, as we start off tonight, I just want to mention some exciting news in the Sioux Falls School District. Last Friday Superintendent Maher, Board President Alberti and I had the pleasure of touring the district to notify four finalists for the Dr. John W. Harris Teacher of the Year Award. There were 79 total nominees representing elementary, middle, and high school teachers who clearly defined teaching excellence in their own way. A panel of five judges then scored the nominations and selected four finalists for this award. The finalists, George Hawkins from New Tech High School, and that is New Tech's very first finalist, Megan Wounded Head from Washington High School, Lynn Thomason Lincoln High School, and Jeremy Iverson Edison Middle School. So congratulations to those four, and of course, all who are nominated. It really speaks well of the district and the excellence that we have among our teachers. The winner will be named at a dessert reception on Monday, March 4th at 7:00 at the El Ride Shrine Mosque, so mark your calendars for that. And once again, we are very thankful to Vernity Motor Cars for their ongoing sponsorship of this award and the $4,000 cash prize that our winner will receive that night. And further, this evening, I felt like I had to mask it a little bit at the front end, but I wanted to just extend our very heartfelt thanks from the student staff and administration at the school district. We are celebrating with the state, the School Board Recognition Week officially February 18th through the 22nd, honoring each of you and the work that you do. But since we don't have a board meeting next Monday, unless you'd all like to come back, we thought we would say our thanks publicly to you for all of the hours that you give. As mentioned, next week is the official celebration, but we want to extend our thanks for your work. We know that you're responsible for setting the vision and the goals of the district and making sure that we're providing a quality education for all of our students. Of course, for those of you at home, if you just think these board members are showing up to meetings and rubber stamping everything, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. They're involved in committees and a variety of meetings to make sure that their pulse is on what's happening in the Sioux Falls School District. So a lot of uncounted hours that go into the work that you do, but we don't want you to feel like that's not appreciated. We definitely want to say our thanks. Certainly, you have that role in ensuring that our children are offered a high-quality public education, and you really are an example of what makes public schools the best choice for all children. We are a very diverse district, and we have a lot of diverse offerings, and we so appreciate your leadership and guidance as you bring to us what the community expects of their public schools. So thank you as those representatives. Small token of appreciation is at your place, an insulated travel mug. Hopefully, you'll fill that with warm coffee or tea on a night like tonight. And also, just want to provide you with the recognition from Associated School Boards of South Dakota as well, and I will give that to President Alberti. But thanks again sincerely for all that you do. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Deanne. Thank the rest of the board for the hard work that you all put in, and I want you to know how much I appreciate that as the chair. It makes my job a lot easier when I have four fellow board members who work just as hard as I do and carry the bulk of the load, so thank you very much. We are on to conflicts of interest. We do have one conflict of interest to take action on. If I can get a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, that motion carries. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, that motion carries. Supplemental consent agenda, items nine, A1, and two, claims to Sanford, if I can have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, that motion carries. Supplemental consent agenda, items nine, A1, and two, claims to Sanford, if I can have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, that passes with two abstentions, Board Member Mickelson, Board Member Ryder, and we are on to the reports of the superintendent.
We have four reports tonight. The first report is a report of the Computer Science Immersion. We'll have an update for you there. That comes from our Curriculum Services Department and is delivered by Anne Smith.
Good evening. Building on the commitment to multiple pathways and our desire to diversify the population in our specialized schools, we initiated a computer science immersion program for all students in kindergarten through fifth grade at three of our Title I schools, Annie Sullivan, Lowell, and Hayward in the fall of 2017. Now, just this past fall, we expanded that computer science immersion program to include Whittier and George McGovern Middle Schools. Whittier and George McGovern are the middle schools that those three elementaries feed up to, so those students who were coding at their elementary school in fifth grade are able to continue that coding as they go on to middle school. The coding curriculum at the elementary school is delivered in three cycles. One cycle is Legos Robotics, kind of a maker cycle. This particular picture shows you an example of the We Do robot that the second and third grade students use. And you can see there's a little graphic below of how they're putting together blocks of code to program this particular robot to do something, and they write a story that explains. Here's what this floodgate is dealing with. Another cycle that they work at is block-based coding at this first grade level. If this were the full project, I could click on it and you could see that the students have programmed in, they choose what the little person in the middle is going to look like. You click on that person and it tells them something. My name is Ann. And each of the icons are selected and animated so that when you click on that, you find out more about that particular individual. And think about what your student does in first grade. It's just another way then of using coding to expand on what they might be doing if they were just writing a story or drawing a poster. Then the third cycle is text-based coding. Actually, K through three, the students are still working in scratch, which is more of the block-based coding. They're not actually typing in code. Fourth and fifth grades, students start using Minecraft for education, and then they start transitioning over to true text-based coding in JavaScript. So they're seeing how that block-based coding that they were doing before, they can actually speed up the process and get more flexibility if they're doing the text-based coding in JavaScript. At the middle school, the students come in, this year, all students, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade did the same, two cycles. The first cycle being HTML and CSS to develop their webpage, and now moving into the second cycle, they're making that webpage interactive with JavaScript. So if their page was about a chemical element, now they're introducing a quiz that might pop up. And so they're seeing how you can make those webpages not static, but instead draw in and be interactive with the person who's viewing the webpage. The curriculum has been developed by, and the professional development for the curriculum delivered by Code to the Future, which is a national company who specializes in this. Through Code to the Future, there is a full-time coach that comes in into our buildings one day a week in each building, and the teachers will tell you that that has been a tremendous part of how this program is successful. We've also connected with the companies throughout our city who are tech-heavy. Each cycle ends with a showcase. At the showcase, starts out with a keynote where the kids come up and tell you, here's what we've been doing, here's why we're doing, there's a little research that goes into it about what does the computer industry look like. And then you go out and get to have each kid tell you more about what their project is, what it does. We've connected with different companies, and the programmers will come and attend those showcases. This picture is a picture of 12 Citibank programmers who were just at Hayward last week for their showcase. The 12 programmers came in, they were able to interact with the students, tell them more about, yeah, this is what it looks like when I do the kind of thing that you're doing. The little guy in the front there has his little robot because they had just finished the robotics cycle. When we, I said when we started this program that what we were looking at was diversifying our specialized schools. If you look at the demographics of our elementary and middle school programs at the two schools that we're looking at, the pie chart shows, you know, about a third of the kids are white, about a quarter are Hispanic, a little less than a quarter are black, and then you've got the quarter of multiracial, Native American, and Asian. So a very diverse group of students, looks very different than it might be if you pulled up some of our other specialized schools. It also looks very different than if you look at the computer jobs that are available and the computer industry of itself, where these are 2016 statistics from Data USA showing that about 71% of computer programmers are white. So it's by doing this program in the schools where we have chosen to do it, we're showing these students that this is a possibility for you. And computer jobs are one of the fastest-growing job markets out there, so the more that these students see that this is a possibility for me, the more that they have a reason to continue on and perhaps will start seeing this pie chart look a little different in the future. As we look at the Code to the Future contract, all of the costs for this project, which primarily is our professional development costs, have been paid through federal funds, including Title I and Title II-A. The contract itself has been taken out for five years. We want to be sure that the kids have a good, solid grounding. We'll continue to evaluate the program to determine what will be the best way to continue having it be as strong as possible to have the results that we want to get. With that, I would ask that the board would acknowledge the Computer Science Immersion update, and I stand by for questions.
Questions for Ann.
Ann, I'm not sure, did you get my email?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be my follow-up question would be, not necessarily testing better, but have we seen any achievement gap increases like attendance or behavioral better at the schools where this coding has been implemented over the last years?
And we are looking at that data. I don't have any hard numbers for you on that. I can share that anecdotally. The principals will say that they don't get called for behavior incidents when the students are in coding class, so the students are engaged when they're in those projects. But as far as good hard numbers that say that it has improved attendance, I don't have those right now. Thank you.
Let me elaborate on that just a little bit, too. That's such a good question, because one of the things we're trying to figure out is to sustain this program or not to sustain this program, what will be our rationale? What will be the metrics that we look at? Because we don't have a specific metric for elementary school programming abilities. I don't know if that exists or not. We don't have a specific assessment for improved critical thinking skills, because that's really what we're after here, too. And then we look at, what about engagement? What about attendance? And as Ann said, one of the things that right now we're looking at is a lot of anecdotal information, but I don't think that's enough as we look to the future and how we sustain or change or eliminate this program. And those aren't great answers, but those are the facts of the matter today, anyway. That's a good question.
And I think the other, when we first started looking at Computer Science Immersion, and as we talked with Code to the Future, when we talked about what would the metrics look like, what we talked about was we weren't going into this to improve standardized test scores.
Right. That's why I was wondering if there's other, what we're looking, and that makes sense. And I know we're still new and so forth, but I guess I'm just...
But the question's real good, because we're, and we still have some time, but we're not that far away from where we sustain, change, or eliminate. I mean, we've got to figure out how we're going to make that decision. And today, I can't tell you exactly how we would make that decision, but the question's a great question.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you, Ann. May I have a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think the only other thing, and I know that we had talked about this briefly, but I'm curious if we offer any, or could offer any, like, summer types of experiences for these kids to keep them kind of engaged or continue learning, or even for students in the district who maybe aren't at one of these schools but are interested in using some of these same concepts of coding, if there's anything through, like, community ed or something where the teachers who are trained and get this wonderful professional development could continue to use those skills with either the same students or new students over the course of the summer. So I don't expect you to say, yes, we're going to do that, but just a thought, as something that's enhancing, maybe it's even offered at the schools, you know, a week long or a morning or a something, just to keep them engaged over the summer and get them excited about coming back and seeing what they might get to learn the next year. And am I wrong in saying, have we done some of that in our summer climb? I feel like we, or have we not?
If we're not deliberately integrated coding in summer climb?
Okay. So I don't know if there's even opportunities to use it more year-round without the coach being here, but still having the teachers who have the experience, if those are the same teachers, just an idea.
Here's the deal. Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, that motion carries. Dr. Maher.
Our next report is a Gallup Employee Survey Report, but before I turn it over to Dr. Nold, one of the things I'll say is the importance of staff engagement is something that was embedded in the district before I got here, but I know it was a point of emphasis when I arrived. I remind people that as we look at the buildings that we have, they're not only are we a learning organization and a place for the kids of Sioux Falls to receive their education, we're also the fourth-largest employer in the city of Sioux Falls. So having an engaged staff and having your work environment, the quality work environment is something that's important. So through the foresight of the board years ago, we tried to come up with a method for trying to figure out how engaged is our staff, and so we're here today to give you that annual update. So I hope I didn't steal your thunder. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Nold.
I'm ready for questions now. And yes, this is a report of the 2018 Gallup poll, our Gallup Poll Engagement Survey. And obviously, as Dr. Maher had stated, the greatest resource we have in the Sioux Falls School District is our employees to be able to meet those educational goals that we have for our students. And so as we go through, one of the ways that we can gain feedback from our employees is through the Gallup poll survey to see where we can better help them, serve them, and bring along. And when I say employees, it's all groups, our educational assistants, our custodial staff, our cook staff, our teachers, obviously, in the buildings, but all employee groups that have the ability to give us feedback in this, and then we develop plans as building leaders, as coordinators, directors, to be able to help meet those needs of our employees. So we'll start out here with the information. First of all, just to overview, again, the Gallup poll consistently uses those 12 questions, and I'll hit on those briefly coming up. And we have been with the Gallup poll over the last five years now, and we administer this survey in December of each year so that we stay consistent with the timeframe of administering the survey, and it's all Sioux Falls School District staff. Each one of those employee groups is able to participate in this as we go throughout the survey and polling. Engaged employees, a lot of times that comes up as one of the questions, what does that mean? And some of the basic rundown of what an engaged employee is, is truly that individual that works with passion, that really works to move the business, or in our case, educational entity forward, and they really work at a high level consistently. And that does not mean that those individuals that aren't labeled as the engaged employees don't do that. They come to work each day and do a very good job at their job, but they aren't the ones that continually move that forward. So ultimately, our goal is to take any of our unengaged or actively unengaged employees and move them up into that, into the engaged employees ranking. Keep in mind, as we go throughout this report, 85% of the individuals, employees worldwide, thank goodness we're well above that, but 85% do not fall in that actively engaged or that engaged employee range. So as we go through some of this data, you can kind of use that as a little bit of a frame of reference. I'll start out here, first of all, with our participation rate. And the participation rate, as you can see in, going all the way back, 2015, we're at 83%. For the last two years now, we've been at that 95%, and I would argue that actually this year we were up a little bit again, it was like 95.21, maybe up a tenth or so from the year prior. We had a participation of over, you know, almost 3,000 employees. 2,957 employees completed the Gallup survey. And if you look down there a little bit further on this chart, companies in the top 5%, participation alone does not put you into that top 5%, but they do see that companies in that top 5% do have a large participation. People are willing and know that their voices are heard when they give their feedback. But we do with that 95%, and the average in the top 5% is at 93%. All educational entities have a participation rate of about 80%, so we're very proud that we have our employees participating to give us that feedback. If you look at the next part, is those 12 questions again, and I won't go through each one of those, but a lot of them are based to go into this composite score, or grand mean score that we would have. Each of the individual 12 questions have a rating score that come off of them, and they're much of what's expected of me at work. Do I have the resources that I need to be able to do my job? Do I get feedback? A lot of questions like that that'll go in to give us that overall quotient. It's based on a five-point scale, zero indicating they don't know, and then one through five being that five-point scale, five means extremely satisfied. I'll first give you the dashboard, the dashboard of the overall results, as you can see on this. We first have that grand mean, that's the overall composite, that was at a 4.07, and I'll put that into a little bit of a perspective coming up here. Our sample size, as we said, the 2957 for the employee participation. The engagement ratio, that looks at that ratio of the individuals that are engaged comparative to those that are actively disengaged, and obviously, the higher that ratio, the better it is. And then you look at our overall bar there for participation, we're at 50% indexed for the engaged, and then 42% for not engaged, and 8% for the actively disengaged. And remember back to that original slide there with 85% being that number for worldwide. First part, we'll kind of dive in just a little bit deeper, is that ratio, the engagement index trend. If you can see back to 2015, we're at a three-to-one ratio, and over the years, that has increased to be a 6.3 to one. And again, that's the individuals that are engaged comparative to those that are actively disengaged. So as that's continued to increase, we've had that feedback from our staff that we continue to have more and more staff all the time each year that has been actively engaged. We look at the next slide here, it'll put all those into perspective. First of all, the Sioux Falls School District, if you can see, year over year for the past four years, we've gone up each year in that group overall that's been engaged from 36% back in 2015 now to 50% in 2018. To put that in a little bit of a perspective, when you look at the U.S. working population, there are 33% that are engaged, and then 50% not, and 17% that are actively disengaged. And a little more narrowed down to other school entities, when you look at the other school entities in the United States, 45% are the outcomes for the engaged, and then 10% actively disengaged. So when you're, compare us just within ourselves, we've grown each year, going over that to where we're at a 50% mark now. And then comparative to the U.S. population of employees and the national education entities, we continue to rank above those as far as our staff engagement. The next slide here that we look at is just a nice little bit of a line graph to be able to see where we compare just with other educational entities or other educational services with our grand mean. That's kind of that overall composite score of 12 questions. And I told you earlier that that was at a 4.07, that puts us at the 81st percentile when we just compare ourselves to other educational entities in the United States. The next slide just breaks it down with the 12 different questions. If you notice, clear to the right, each one of those is the results of the individual question, and you really can't compare one question to the other. So if you were looking at that and think that the opportunities to learn and grow at a 4.2 outscored progress in the last six months at 3.9, you cannot compare those two, it's really separate. It's how all others responded to that individual question, how it ranks. And as I said, overall, we're at that 4.07, which is at the 81st percentile. But if you look in that column, clear to the right, 2018, our Sioux Falls overall ranking, we continue to increase, every one of those scores increased from the year prior as an individual question. So that is the composite scores for each of the 12 questions. We do have, if you count through there, there is actually 13. The top one, overall satisfaction, is just kind of a general question for the overall satisfaction of the employee, which again, that's at a 4.02, which was in the 82nd percentile, I do believe. 2018 key highlights, 95% staff participation, again, the Sioux Falls School District increased the grand mean from 4.01 to 4.07. Overall, that mean for engagement is at the 81st percentile for educational entities. And our engagement ratio, as you saw, continued to increase. In 2018, it was 6.3 to one, and if you go all the way back to 2016, it was 5.9 to one. And then each year for the 12 questions, each mean for the 12 questions increased over the prior year. The next steps with the Gallup survey, we did have individuals from Gallup come up in January to share the results with our administrators and our coordinators, directors, and just to go over some strategies to be able to use to identify and break down their results so they can go back and meet with their school improvement teams, their leadership teams, just to talk through and really target one or two different areas on there. Last year, if you remember, we really keyed in on educational assistance, our cook staff, our custodial staff, some of those individuals that don't always, people draw their minds to right away is the ones that impact the students, but we know overall, as an employee group, we need all of those groups to feel very comfortable with what their jobs are. Another next step is school leaders will share the results with their school leadership teams and then with their staff. And the final one, schools will create growth goals specific to the Gallup poll results for the 1920 school year, and usually that's in their school improvement plan. The administrative recommendation to the board is to acknowledge the results from the Gallup Employee Engagement Survey administered in December of 2018. I'll stand by for questions.
Do you know 81 percentile for engagement for educational entities, did they further break that down, like, by school? break that down, like by school district size or staff size? Was it all?
We do not have that. Yep, they put it all into a general composite score, and they give us that to be able to compare. Now, we did have results this year which helped our buildings immensely, breaking down some of the different groups within our own district. But they don't break that down nationally.
I was just curious.
So we were able this year to have better results, like with our EA groups, special education groups, our custodial and our cook staff, to be able to look at that, at least at the levels, elementary, middle school, and high school.
That's good to know that we can do that. Thank you.
They utilized a new platform this year, which has more technology to it, which was allow us to break that down and be able to utilize that with the building, especially at elementary, to see some of the results, because it looks so much different there than it would be at the high school.
Second. Why, 95%, I mean, that's incredible for an organization this size. I think, you know, myself, working for a large employer in Sioux Falls, we do a similar engagement study every year, and it's just 95% is amazing to get those results. So glad to see our scores continuing to improve, love to see the growth since we started this. So kudos to everybody, and great results.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next report of this evening, or of the evening, is the strategic plan update. This is brought to you by our Director of Research, Innovation, and Accountability, Mr. Morrison.
Good evening. My pleasure tonight to present our scorecard for our strategic plan. And I think it's the first time we've actually presented it in this type of format, so hopefully you'll find it interesting. But as you're aware, back in the fall of 2015, we embarked on a strategic plan process. And then in February of 2017, we actually completed that, identified our priorities and goals, and then we actually set some indicators that we are going to hold ourselves accountable to. And so I'm going to take you through some of those. We, as you recall, we broke our strategic plan into four pillars, what I call four pillars, student outcomes, school climate and culture, staff, and community engagement. And then through a lot of collaborative sessions amongst ourselves, we identified 23 measures in those four categories that we were going to externally hold ourselves accountable to. We've got a whole host of other internal ones, but these are the ones that we are sort of measuring ourselves by, and I will take you through those and give you some highlights. Priority area one, student outcomes, you can see what the key pieces of that is, and I'll walk you through some of those indicators. First one being graduation rates. So we had a goal to increase our graduation rate by 5%. You can see through 2017, 18, we have increased that by 3%. I'll say, this is a good, a good point for us to do this report card, because the state report card process is just wrapping up. And I will say, just wrapping up, because we're still ironing some data out. So if you can imagine, 25,000 students and all the pieces of information that come in there and the detailed test scores and everything that roll into that, it's been, you know, quite a task to be able to make sure that the data that's being reported for us is accurate. I only say that because you can see 83.42 is the published graduation rate. We've actually been tracking another 40 graduates that I think the state has now admitted that they should go to our credit, and so we should see that go very close to the 84% mark. And just like to give Nicole Hansen credit, who heads up our assessment office, who's done a great job with all of this data and has really taken it through, make sure that every student's accounted for. Things that we're doing through for to increase that graduation rate, really a lot of blocking and tackling at the individual building level, every student counts, looking at every student situation. We start by monitoring credits in the freshman year, a lot of things that go on, and then we're also starting to use some visualization software that can take all of that data and make it apparent to the buildings as to who the outliers are and who they need to maybe work to develop a plan to get them on track to graduate. Completor rate, this is a, the crux of this calculation is that it will encompass late graduates, maybe people that graduate that not in four years. It's not exactly that straightforward of a calculation, but that's the crux of it. So if you think about it, on any given year, we have about 25 to 30 kids that get their GEDs, that counts in this calculation, and then we simply have kids that graduate in a longer period than four years, could be, you know, five, six years. We never give up on those kids. And so we've got another average of about 90 kids that graduate at a later point in time in any given year. So been able to move that as well, up to getting close to the 88% mark. We are in the process of reviewing our ombudsman model that we're using today, just to see if we can even drive that up further by looking at those late completors and how we can be more effective. This is something I think the district can really be proud of. One of the things that we started out for is we wanted to close a gap on our graduates. So one measure that we used was what were the graduates of our students on free and reduced price lunch versus students that weren't. And you can see, we've closed that gap nearly 10 points. So we've closed it, and just by developing more engaging pathways, expanding apprenticeship, internship programs. So I think that's a really a key marker of our district, and really proud that we've been able to close a gap and actually have made our goal of five percentage points. We're going to keep going on that. Third grade reading scores, that's been a challenge for us, you know, to be quite honest. We have drifted back a little ways, and a lot of it has to do with mix, and I think Dr. Boyson gave you a good sense of that at the last work session, our EL population and things of that nature, not to make excuses, but we do understand the underpinnings of that data. Down below that, you can see, we have moved some of the cohort out of the bottom, Level 1 into Level 2, and some of our Level 3 into Level 4. So we're always mindful of what bucket our kids are in and trying to keep them moving up. A lot of interventions there, again, Dr. Boyson took you through some of those, the SIPs program, the summer reading program that we're looking to do this, this summer, summer climb, really using, continuing to use the NWA MAP scores to mine that data. So that's something that we continue to focus on, so something we're going to keep trying to be diligent on, but something we haven't been able to move the needle on, at least in totality. Same with, that kind of goes hand in hand with this one. You can see our gaps between our free reduced price lunch kids and our kids that aren't on free and reduced price lunch, stayed pretty much the same. Little improvement in math, little behind in reading, but you know, kind of just staying where it's at. So until we move those other scores, it'll be hard to close this gap. But again, trying to use MAP, looking at subgroups, using our individual school report card, collaborative work sessions that we're doing, so all of our schools are coming in, doing collaborative sessions with us, the administration team, really helping them to understand their numbers and their subgroups. So we're hoping that that will bear fruit down the road. The EL population, this is one that we've just had to step back and recalibrate. This was one that we had originally, you can see at the top there, we had a 0.3% increase, and then the test got recalibrated, and then finally got recalibrated again with this new report cycle under ESSA. And so we've just decided to migrate to what the state is tracking us in. And so this will be our baseline year. It says that 28% of our kids are on track, and that, if you think about it, every kid that is on, an EL kid, has a curve essentially. Generally, it's five years to get to proficiency, could be less than that, depending where they start out. This says that 25% of our kids are on that curve. We know there's another 48% that are growing, but may not quite be on that curve. So we will continue to track it in this way, and lots of things that we're doing in this space as well. And I think Demi has given you a report not too long ago on that. Looking at, again, something we had to recalibrate, because the report cards changed and the SPI changed, couldn't make it comparable, so we've just gone to some overall grade indicators. I think Dr. Boyson has taken you through this before, and this kind of plays back into the third grade reading scores as being behind the state, but once our kids get into middle school, we catch up and we exceed the state. So we just have a longer curve for a lot of different reasons. One, think back to the EL population and their five-year curve to get to proficiency. It's probably no wonder that at third grade, we're probably not going to make that, beans that we have the 40 to 50% of the EL kids in the state. So, but something we hold ourselves accountable, and we want to try to get every subgroup to the state level. Looking at our ACT scores, I think you can see, over time, we've moved more kids to meeting the benchmark by, and not, not at the expense of our participation rate. So we've gone from 414 to 441 kids that have made 24 or higher, and we've been able to keep our percent of graduates taking the test at that high rate. So we're proud of that indicator. Looking at AP assessments, another bright spot in the district, so I'd look at the bottom level, bottom row in that table there, you can just see the number of students that are scoring three or higher on the test. Again, not because we're sacrificing participation rates or anything like that. So we still continue to encourage participation, educate students on the benefit, and we have a robust offering at all of our high schools, so really a blue ribbon indicator for our district. Looking at, this is just something that we survey our parents to make sure that they perceive us as holding their kids to high expectations, and you can see, we've been able to move that up a little bit over time. Here's just some of the other things that were in your board report that we're doing under the student priority area one. Lot of different, you know, strategies that we're using to move all of those indicators. Going to move to school climate and culture now, and first one that we'll look at is that students feel safe at our school. In other, in other words, we do a student survey, that one has kind of stayed flat. I guess I'd look at it as eight out of 10 students feel safe. Obviously, we'd be, we want to get to 100. We keep looking at our continued focus around anti-boling and those types of things, so we keep digging into this one, and we'll, we'll keep trying to move this one forward. By the same token, we want our staff to feel safe, kind of the same, same thing, about 85% of our staff feel safe, we'd like it to be 100%. We keep surveying our staff, trying to dig into it a little more to see how we can make them feel more safe. I would say 100% is always our goal there. Attendance, I think I gave you a report on attendance. This is holding ourselves to our internal measure, and you can see it stays at about 79, 80%. Very hard indicator to move, even though we keep trying. We've done some things with technology, with the Kenvo pilot, we have our attendance council going, continued apparent communication, so something we're still mindful of, and we'll, we'll keep working. Behavior, certainly another challenge for the district. Our actual indicator was to move the number of behaviors that were Level 4, 5, and 6, and decrease those by 5%. If you just look at the number, it's a little misleading, and if we probably had to redo this indicator, we'd probably look at offenders. So the bottom indicator's probably a better measure of that. So you can see, we still have in a neighborhood of 180, 187 kids that are multiple offenders. If you look at that on a percent of elementary school kids, about 2%. So it's, but it's a challenge for the district and something that we continue to work hard. We look at our, we're looking at our Bridges program, you know, we've put a lot of investment in our Tier 2 model, and continue to look at Boys Town, those types of things. So it's very much a challenge for this district and something that we'd like to see start bending the other way. Students, students reporting adults have high expectations, this is flipping it a little bit, so about seven out of 10 kids. So again, we, we've done a lot of work around culturally responsive practices, keep trying to educate our kids and staff around that, and so something that we've been able to move up at least a little bit. Staff reporting that teachers and administration have high expectations, it's kind of stayed in that same range, 84%, which is a pretty high number. And again, keep looking at our responsive practices, and Dr. Nold gave you an update on the Gallup survey, so we keep trying to survey our teachers, digging in, what can we improve, what can we make your life better? And so just another thing, couple of things that we're doing, continue our work with law enforcement on school climate. Priority are three, staff, very important to us, and again, Dr. Mould gave you kind of a update on this. One thing that we keep looking at is our professional evaluation system. We updated that in spring of 2017, part of the negotiated process, and so you can see that's kind of one that hasn't moved, kind of stayed in that same, same range. We'll keep digging into that one. Percentage employees stating that the district and building professional development programming is beneficial to their growth, again, you can see something that's, we keep trying to figure, look for ways to improve that and seek feedback. Another indicator that's kind of stayed flat to the baseline year. Something we've been intentional about is to try to increase the racial diversity of our teacher profile, and you can see, in 1718, we were able to move that up a little bit, which is good news, so hopefully we can keep that moving in the same direction. Percentage of employees surveyed indicating four or five that their opinion matters, I think, again, back to the Gallup survey that you just heard from, good participation and good feedback on that. Couple other things we're doing in the staff space, and we'll go to the community section here. We continue to survey our parents, that's very important to us, that they have a high regard for our district, and so we survey them to how they feel informed about the district, and so that's one that stayed pretty flat, but we continue to do our surveys, our focus groups. We've looked at some things around language translation, and we continue to use our platforms like the website and K-Learn to keep, try to keep that moving forward. This is one, Deanna and I do a survey to the, to school buildings to say, do you have a PTA, PTO, are you supported by the business community? And so that's something, over the last couple of years, we had a few that didn't feel they had that in place, and so actually, this past year, we've, we've been able to now ascertain that every school building principal feels that they have supports from, from the community to help their district, to help their school be successful. So that's a good news item. Another one around how to access information, so it's something we've been able to move up a couple percent there, just by being, doing surveys and keeping it mindful and asking employees how we can help continue to move that. Couple other things we're doing in the community engagement space, just keeping it informed on the projects, on the bond referendum, et cetera. And then we've got some technology initiatives that we're doing out there. I talked about- I talked about Tableau. We're replacing our HR finance system. So that's a big project going on. When you look at it overall, I sum it up this way. We've got about 11 indicators that are trending positive. We've got seven that I'll say are neutral, but in my mind, were pretty high to begin with, so they're going to be hard to move. And then we've got one that was re-targeted on the EL population, and four that I would say, to be honest, that we're, you know, unaccountable to ourselves, were probably not trending in the right way. And I would say the two big ones there are behavior and third grade reading scores that we're working on diligently. So overall, I think really good progress on our strategic plan for the district, and we'll continue to keep you updated on those indicators as we move through those. And you'll also hear in your board reports that come up, because most of them are all geared towards moving those indicators, all of our initiatives. So recommendation is to acknowledge the school district's strategic plan update. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
On the third grade reading scores, has it ever, have we thought about maybe adding a subgroup of, for the EL population of, of improvement on their, their score? So like, say if they are at a two and they went to a 3.5, you know, since they're not at grade level, but something that we can track as well? I know we have a separate report in that, but in that subcategory, maybe putting that with that, so that we can see that improvement as well?
Yeah, I think we, we, that's one of the things we can do now with, and what we've talked about, and something we're migrating towards, especially this month with the, the testing that's going on to the EL population, is that every, every student has a curve out there. And so we've been able, we're, we're trying to mine that data that the state has so that we can create that ourselves in real time. Because I want to know in two or three months how we're doing, and each student against that curve, not wait eight months for the state to tell us how we're doing against that. So that's something we're being very intentional about so that we can have those, those set of specific curves for every student, so we can be tracking that ourselves and then looking at interventions. And then we've been doing a lot of segmentation of our data, especially from the MAP, the three MAP tests that we do during the year, and we're segregating that into EL population and non-EL population, because you get a vastly different picture. And so we've been intentional about that, and, and so it's, it's kind of, and then taking that a step further and doing some visualization around that for our, our building teams. So instead of wading through spreadsheets of data, that they can look at something visual for them, much like a data wall that's presented on a computer where you can see your outlier students. And then, and then everybody in the school is aware of those students and can help sort of pitch in and do that. So it's, it's, it's very much trying to get at the lowest level of detail we can, so we can try to move the needle.
Thank you.
Other questions for Doug?
Very good report. I've said it many times, and I will repeat, that the strategic plan, when we did that, it was a task that hadn't been completed in our district for many years. And to see how, how the, the plan continues to work, how every one of the goals and objectives that we have is tied back to the plan and, and the measurements that are used, it just, we do a, we do a better job educating our students because we have this plan in place, and it's, it's used in a robust fashion. So thank you all for, for doing that. So I may have motion to acknowledge the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We're on to the legislative update.
Okay. You got part of the legislative update last week at the work session, and here to give you the rest of that legislative update is Todd Beek.
Thank you, Dr. Maher. So we're, we're pretty much, we're pretty close up to date. We have three changes from what we saw last Wednesday and prior to that. So I'll go through those quick, and then we'll just go over where the key bills are at. There's a total of seven. So if you look in your materials on page 21, that's the first change. Senate Bill 67, that's one we, that's one we added. It's an act to revise provisions regarding commitment of a child adjudicated as delinquent that would allow a judge greater latitude in finding the appropriate intervention for a child that has unsuccessfully completed probation, and there are no other appropriate resources. We support the bill. The district would support the judge having greater control over the placement of children or other means of intervention have not been successful. So we think that's a good idea. Right below that is Senate Bill 84, which we've already gone over. That is an act to authorize the possession and administration of opioid antagonists by school districts and non-public school personnel. We wanted an amendment, we got that amendment, so we're saying no position. I mean, we don't, we're not strongly for it, we're certainly not against it. So we're just changing that to no position, because we've got the amendment we would like. And then on, on page, our Senate bill, that's further back there. I put page seven, but I don't think that's right. Yeah, I'm sorry. On page seven, House Bill 1116, we're adding some new language, and we're making it a key bill. It's, it's the act to prohibit the conduct of certain physical examinations or screening on students in a school district without parental consent. We did oppose the bill. After listening to testimony, we want to make it a key bill, get our lobbyists in there working it. The additional language we added is in purple. I'll just go over that quickly. The proponent's intent is not clear within the language of the bill. However, if applied as described by the proponent, this bill could have huge implications to the safety of individual students in the school population. For example, does the bill require parental consent each time there is an insulin injection? Catheterization, ear or throat examination, things like that that are very unclear, and made us more concerned about that bill. So we're just asking to change that to a, a key bill. I think those are the only three differences. If we're okay with those, I'll move on to kind of where some key bills are at. If you look at the House document first, on a spreadsheet anyway, it'd be the House tab. House Bill 1058 was an act to require the provision of certain services regarding sped students to those receiving alternative instruction. We had opposed key bill that was deferred to the 41st day. House Bill 1066 is an act to require students to take a citizenship test before graduation from high school. We oppose that bill. It passed the House Committee. House Bill 1116, an act to prohibit the conduct of certain physical examination, prohibit the conduct of certain physical exam, that's the one we just talked about. That failed to pass, seven to seven, then it got amended, and it looks like it got out. So we do have that as a key bill now. Got out of the House Committee. House Bill 1151 is an act to permit certain acts at a school honoring a graduation ceremony. We have that as opposed, that's still in state affairs, it has not been acted on yet. Others that have not, or no, actually, House Bill 1227, the non-public schools, certain tax revenue collected from rural electric companies. We were opposed to that. This would have been withdrawn. House Bill 1232, an act to lower the compulsory age for school attendance, has not been acted on. So those are the House bills that are key and where they're at. One Senate bill that's key, it's, was the act to create the Special Education Task Force. We actually had that as amended, they amended it the way we wanted, so we changed it to support. So it really isn't much of a key bill anymore. It was key, and once they amended it, we got what we wanted, so we're putting a support on that. I'll stand by for questions.
Questions for Todd? Okay. Yes. If not, I may have motion to acknowledge the legislative update.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Yeah, we are on to policy.
All right, we have five policies up for review, revision tonight. First is J H C B, release time for religious instruction, no changes. J I C A, student personnel property, sorry, student personnel property. Clarify that district property includes buses, other school transportation and activities. J J G, contests for students, add language regarding the release form that must be obtained when student entries for contests will be published. J L I A, and its accompanying regulation, supervision of students, adds legal, legal reference to the policy and update regulation to current practice. And J L I C, student safety patrols, update language to current practice. So because there were not significant changes made to these policies, I recommend the approval of a first, or sorry, review revision of these five policies. As a motion.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Any further business to come before the board? May I have motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We are adjourned.